I'd like to call to order a 7:06 monthly meeting of the Avon Board of Education. I'd like to begin by reading the mission statement. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. Please stand and join me for the pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to call for Mr. Rehnquist, for our Avon Achiever this evening, Mr. Ryan Hool.
Brian, Brian. Brian Hool is one of our daytime custodians, and he was nominated by a staff member who wanted to remain anonymous for the Avon Achiever. So after looking through the nominations, Brian was selected. Rather than the write-up that I turned in doesn't do it justice compared to what over 40 people responded in emails when it was announced. Let me just read off a few of them, not all of them. "Brian embodies the nine and captures kids' hearts every day. We are so blessed to have him at our school. Thank you, Brian, for being so caring and taking the time to do all that you do for us. He never stops working, always doing something to help others, and always with a smile. We are so lucky to have you here, Brian. Thank you for everything that you do. He is always willing to help in whatever way possible. Not only is Brian a hard worker, but he is a kind soul. Brian has the heart of gold and patience to match. He cares about students, and they know it. I've watched Brian engage with some of our most challenging students, and he was always able to solicit a smile from them. Avon High is lucky to have him with us. Brian embraces the spirit of an educator on a daily basis. He regularly goes out of his way to connect with students. When they're having a hard day, he is always on the lookout to help. Brian is always going above and beyond to make our school comfortable on so many different levels. He should actually be named the mayor of the AHS. He's truly our best asset. He is the most genuine person I know." We can go on. I'll forward those out to others if you wish. Brian, on behalf of the AHS community, I get the honor of shaking hands and saying thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. I have to say, Brian, I've heard your name myself many times. And to hear those personal accounts that Mr. Rehnquist shared, I always liked that piece. So it's nice that he took the time to read those for us. To be called a kind soul, I think, is one of the greatest honors. So thank you for being a part of our community. Thank you for being so committed to our staff and our students. But you have our representatives giving you a standing ovation. I think we're very grateful to have you amongst us, and I want you to know that we really appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate that.
So if you would like to leave, you are welcome to do so, because I know this was your moment, but I don't want you to feel compelled to have to stay for a budget or anything like that.
Got you. Thank you so much. The fore aim does come very early.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everybody. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a wonderful night.
Happy holidays.
Take care. Thank you so much.
That's a great way to start a meeting. All right, so now we get to the bottom of approval of minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's special meeting minutes from November 20th, 2018?
So moved.
David moves. Do I have a second? Laura, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Board of Education, regular monthly meeting minutes from November 20th, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve all the minutes.
Okay. Houston, anybody contest for that, or do I have a second to approve all the minutes? All right, thank you, Jay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That moves unanimously as well. Now we move on to communication from the public. If anybody has come, willing, or wanting to speak to us, feel free to come forward at this time. All right, there's a part at the end, if you stay with us, if you'd like to try again. All right, now, here we move forward to the Avon Public Schools Pre-K Program. I believe Mrs. Fox and Mr. Skirm are coming forward to present this to us. We had the benefit at our Curriculum and Professional Practices Subcommittee meeting to hear some of this, so I'm glad the rest of the board will be able to enjoy the presentation. Okay. There appear to be some technical difficulties, but luckily you guys all have the presentation in your packet.
I think you just used that for an hour when we weren't in public session, and now we're in public session. So it works better.
That's how this is.
Okay, if it comes up, we can jump to it, but.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you to the board for giving us an opportunity to give you a little bit of a short update to the early 27. Royer School is, of course, one of the three elementary schools. We are a pre-K grade four school, so we have kind of the honor of, I think the word you just used was kind soul, so kind of building kind souls from earliest ages at ages three and four. And it's really pretty, but you can't see it, I guess, on the big screen, but you can see it in front of you. We really do believe that early childhood education is one of the best ways to create a positive investment as early as possible. And there's these studies out there that talk about the importance of how early childhood pays off in long-term ways. So it's not something that I can tell you that every dollar that you make as a committed board and a committed community pays off three years from now. Like, I can't say that to you. But there's a lot of other research that really talks about how quality early childhood education is so directly impactful in a positive way towards students, especially students who have parents. So Tiffany and I had a nice opportunity to talk, of course, to the smaller subcommittee, more at length, and this is just a brief update. But one of the things that we talked about is that some of the research pieces out there indicate that one dollar put in early on pays off seven dollars down the road. And if you look at board slides and colors and everything, this is one of the ways that happens. I think this is useful, because you might get questions from the community, why do we support this? Why do you guys in town have a program that is partly mandated, but not all of ours? So you make a commitment as a community to do this. And good research out there shows that when you have high-quality early childhood programs, you reduce the risk of dropout by 25 percent, you have a 40 percent reduction in the likelihood of somebody becoming a continuing parent, increase the likelihood of attending college by 40 percent. And then this is something that does have an impact right within the Ked rate, while continuing is that you significantly reduce the likelihood of students replaced in special education by being able to intervene early, by building kind souls early. So that's kind of what we're in the business of doing. And if you look at the page that has these overlapping lines, and if you look at the bottom of it, it sneaks into how the brain's ability to change, which basically means the brain's ability to learn, of course, at earliest ages is so high. And we know this, and as an elementary school principal, I have the joy of being able to see this with the youngest kids and progress that they make. And then, of course, you go over to like 40 and 50, where many of those are, like, okay, sure, now I know why this requires so much effort to do that. So great research is out there, the financial research is out there, quality childhood programs for our earliest kids and students. So Tiffany's going to talk a little bit about programmatic change that we're really excited about, kind of where we are currently, and what we're looking at for this coming spring or fall.
Thank you, Mel. So on your page, I think, fifth slide in, it just says a little bit about our program that we currently have. So currently, we have five sections within our preschool. We have two three-year-old sections, which are active programs. You have an AM session, a PM session, and then we have three four-year-old programs, which are full-day sessions. We have 60 total students enrolled in our program. One just started today to make that number 60. And our ideal ratio that we try to keep in all of our preschool classrooms is less than 50-50 special education to peer student ratio. Just to give a little bit of information about special education and preschool in a nutshell, as students turn three and come up through the birth-to-three system, they become, after we go through the PPT process and determine eligibility, they're, if they are eligible, can start our program when they turn three. So it's not just students starting on the first day of school, and that's who we have for the rest of the year. As students become eligible and require services, they join our three-year-old program as they, as their birthdays come on. So currently, our preschool, as I said, we do have three-year-old classes as well as four-year-old classes. So this works under the assumption that students within that age group are all at the same developmental level. And also with that, what I just mentioned about birth-to-three, it also only gives us two places to put our special education students who are coming up through the birth-to-three system. So those classes, as the year goes on, they have a lot more variability than our four-year-old class. So a current best practice is multi-age classrooms. And some of the benefits of multi-age classrooms are that it allows for that uneven development of children. When we think about what the Common Core State Standards look like, it's, you know, sequential by grade, but the Early Learning Development Standards, which we follow as the base for our curriculum for early childhood, but it is a continuum of development for our students. The classrooms provide an environment where young children have access to students who are a little bit older, and they can access more complex forms of play and problem solving. Sorry, I am distracted. So people can have more interactive and complex types of play with students who are older and are more accessible in their classroom. There's more opportunities to learn from older children, and older children in the classroom also have the opportunity to become teachers as well as leaders within the classroom. And when you become a leader as a teacher and help your peers within classrooms, it has that intrinsic value, so that students get to feel that sense of mastery, as well as getting to facilitate cooperation and community within your classroom. So those are just some of the benefits of multi-age classrooms that are out there in the research, and there's, you know, as I said, there's tons of research on so much having to do with early childhood and early intervening in the practice of having multi-age classrooms. Thank you. So knowing all of this, as Nom said, we're talking about a programmatic change for next year. So our Avon Early Learning Center at Lorin Brook School will enhance the learning opportunities we provide to all of our children by moving to multi-age classrooms next year. In addition to enhancing the school day for our children by providing the multi-age classrooms, we'll also be able to expand the learning opportunity by providing a full-day program for all of our students and all matching our four-year-olds.
So something we're really excited about, we're working together with our teachers on it, and reaching out to similar programs that have a model that looks like this or something like this, and we're taking some kind of other field trips out to those programs or working together with teachers and administrators from other settings that can help guide us. And it's something that our staff is excited about, something that I'm excited about, and it's a great way for us to leverage what our current model looks like in sort of the next evolution of it. There's no financial impact, as we talked about in the small committee, because we have four teachers this year. We'll be looking to have the same kind of thing in four sections next year. Fact sizes will be marginally larger. That's going to be something that we'll be easily able to handle and still be able to service the same number of students, about six to ten.
Thank you. So before you sit, I just want to allow board members to ask if anybody had questions.
I do have a question or two. What's the relationship of your program to the SHIP or the State Health Improvement Plan? If any.
Is SHIP, the State Health Improvement Plan? I don't think that we have any.
No relation.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have one.
Jason.
I feel like with change, always comes some issues. Do you anticipate any issues with parents or administrators? Anything you foresee becoming a problem makes the ages?
Yeah, so one of the concerns that we want to proactively address is that typically parents of younger-aged children are really excited about it, because they view this as, this is going to be fantastic, going to have older peer models to be able to model off. So if you're a parent of a four-year-old, and you kind of observe the benefit to that, what I look at is that in a community like Avon, we're always talking about how do we encourage leadership in terms of our students. And so this is a really neat opportunity for four-year-olds to be teachers of younger-aged children. And that is one of the questions that does come up in a kind of a scenario like this.
Do you think the parents will provide the idea?
I don't know, to be frank about it. You know, I mean, we sort of have a nice opportunity here. We talked about this in the small subcommittee, where there's a lot of options out there. So it's not like we're the only game in town. There's a lot of games in town. We've had a pretty substantial waiting list for both our three and our four-year-old program over the years, and that waiting list has increased in terms of numbers, so we know that the overall demand is there.
I was able to share in our subcommittee meeting that one of my children actually participated in a program where it was looped that way, and to have two years with the same teacher at that age was very beneficial. She got a lot out of it. She got to be mentored, and then became the mentor the next year. And it's amazing how they look up to one another, even in that one mere difference. So I think to be able to offer that in Avon, I'm very impressed, and proud of that, and I appreciate you taking the time twice to come and present this information to us. So if anybody else had any other questions, I'm sure we could get that to Nom and Tiffany, but for now, thank you very much. Thanks for presenting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now, we have the benefit of having both Amir and Addison with us this evening, so if you could give us your student rep update, please.
All right, so as we know, the winter season has come, and winter sports have begun, as well as sports. We also have our fall musical coming up, which students are participating in auditions. Last Friday, the students at Avon High School, and I don't know about other schools, but I know at Avon High School, participated in the 14th Annual PJ Day, where students and faculty members dressed up in their PJs and donated a dollar or more to the Connecticut Children's Medical Center. Here at Avon High School, we raised over $2,000. I can't give the exact, but over $2,000, which is amazing, so that means multiple people gave more than just a dollar. And the Avon High School student government was collecting hats and gloves. Their goal was 100 hats and gloves to give to women, children, and men at a local shelter.
Thank you. In the previous weeks, the junior class went to college knowledge night, a great majority of us, and I think that that was very beneficial to learning about where we would be going in the next couple of years. Really, life for life, groups are also getting together and raising money for a great cause. And the holiday pancake for supper dinner was a couple weeks ago. It was Camara's fingers at Avon High School, raising money for their trip to Canada.
Thank you. Thank you, Tiffany. Board members have any questions for Amir or Addison? All right, thank you very much. All right, so now the financial report.
During November, this is very typical of the last two years, but the most notable difference that you'll see in expenditures, we issued our first payment to specialty transportation of $1.41 million, which is appropriate for this time of year. If you remember, we issue the two half-payments, if you will, and then we follow up with the recalcitrations at the end of the year according to contract and usage. So really, there was nothing else to report that was notable of that size, but that's your biggest difference.
Thank you. Jay, did you have anything you wanted to add, or any other questions for other on that? All right, thank you. So now, we'll move on to key and liaison reports, so Curriculum and Professional Practices. Jackie?
We met, we actually had a really nice time hearing about the preschool program and the budget neutral edition. We talked about social emotional services, how, I think, kind of with the beefing up communication, and how we're really trying to make it working in the overall of the little students where they are, so I thought that was really exciting. That was basically it. I think we talked mostly about that kind of the cycle of who to get in contact with at the middle school and the high school in particular, how the FNT program is looking, and how that review process is. And it was a really nice meeting. Helpful to hear that everybody was working so hard to try to get this done.
Any questions for Jackie? All right, moving on to Jay for Finance.
We covered so much in our November meeting that we did not have to meet in December, and our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, January 15th at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Jason, negotiations.
We have no active negotiations right now, thank goodness. And we'll be talking about the custodians and maintainers contract and executive session later, hopefully holding that together.
Thank you. All right, policy, Laura.
So the policy committee met last on November 27th and also did not hold a December meeting. The primary discussions took place for student health, oral health assessments, and medical assessments, as they pertained to policy changes at the state level, to make sure that we're in compliance with those changes. And we also talked about the incoming new medical advisor position as it relates to the administration policy, which has now been separated yet. We also talked about discipline policy, in particular adding language around behavior known as juvenile or vaping, which I guess that doesn't know what those are, that custom to do with the cigarette use in public schools. There's also some updating around suspensions and expulsion, as well as discussion about our bylaws that they pertained to how we process them, so it can be a whole. Any other questions? Okay, and we will do the meeting again in January, onto a date different.
Thank you, Laura. All right, now liaison reports, so the board reps is CPDC. We didn't have a meeting since our last time we met. I was just looking on my calendar, is it February 28th? February 28th will be the next meeting, so we'll have a report after that. Board rep to Board of Finance.
Okay, Board of Finance met last night. I was at that meeting. The latest data on revaluation suggests a 2 percent decline in the grant list. That's the latest that they know so far. So there'll be an adjustment to the mill rate. There'll be basically, for most people, a tax increase to accommodate the fact that the grant list has shrunk in a small amount. As we all know, both referendum items passed, so those projects will be moving forward. And there was also some discussion of the construction projects, the smaller, which is the change to the intersection at Country Club and 167. And that's going to stay as is until such time as the state takes a look at it to see what they might want to do with the other side, acquiring land and so forth. I bring that up because that intersection just happens to be halfway between the high school and the middle school, so everyone is, it affects us a great deal. Also, I don't know if this will affect us at all, but there's a planned replacement of the bridge over the Farmington River and significant construction on Old Farms Road. Apparently, the state DOT intends to shut down that road for a two-week period during the construction phase, because that'll expedite the process. And I'm led to believe that'll be during the summertime, so hopefully that won't impact any of our school operations. I don't know if we send buses down that road or not.
So summers.
So that was everything I have.
Thank you, David. Any other questions for David? Okay, Board Rep to Avon Town Council. I, as well as Bridgette, went in place of Jason this time. They had more presentations on capital improvement projects from different departments in the town, and of course, we were interested in how they would react to the teachers' contract, and luckily, they decided to, I guess, not act on it so that it passes tacitly. So that has been approved. I have to admit, at that point in the evening, I left after that. We did have a little bit more to discuss, but that was where I took my leave. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that. Great, thank you. Jackie, Board Rep to Capital Region Education Council.
So CREC is struggling. There's a financial concern that the state isn't able to fully continuously meet the requirement that it has. You know, the state mandates CREC to run magnet schools and choice programs, lots and lots and lots of things, and there's a feeling at CREC that they have not been able to fully fund all of these mandates and construction and transportation, et cetera, et cetera. So CREC is asking board members and board reps to vote on the resolution at the next meeting in January, to vote a resolution to the state endorsing this idea that we really would like them to pay their bills on time and fully, so that the magnet school funding and the open choice funding, really, there's a huge umbrella of all of the funding that's going to be doomed if we can't get this through. So it doesn't seem to be controversial, but I wanted to rely on everybody. I had Tom Bridgette had it, and it seems like something that I should, you know, go positively for, to put the resolution to the legislature. I just wanted to bring it up here to make sure there's no other concern or thought about it.
You mentioned the open choice funding as part of that, and I just wanted to make sure that wasn't lost in the discussion. And I understand CREC has its issues, we have our issues in terms of what the state pays us to run the open choice program. And if all of this is being brought to the legislature in one shot, then that's maybe our best chance forward to make some progress.
The lawyers are hoping, I mean, I hope the group is hoping to take, I mean, they were in such a terrible position last year, that they have to take a, want to pay that to the constitution, though. So there's definitely a glitch in the system as far as the.
Well, we have a problem every year in that we can't really budget the money that comes from the state, because we're not absolutely sure they're going to pay it, and we can't have people's salaries and their livelihood depending upon that. So we try to leave some expenses for the end of the year, so that that money gets paid, then we get to buy those things. And if not, then we have some cuts automatically in the pipeline that dump across another job.
What's the shortfall with CREC?
I really don't want to speak to the financial specifics right now. I think it would be, I don't want to give bad information, but I think it's kind of a.
I understand.
Every month's kind of a shortage is what it feels like.
Right, well, I understand they canceled a $108 million construction project, and I understand it's a tune of certainly tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars. So I don't know what's going to happen in light of the current governmental issues, and I don't know what's going to happen regarding our ECS funding. And given the choice between us and CREC, well, I understand CREC certainly needs the money, and I'm more concerned about our ECS funding to the extent we get it, although we're in better shape than most other.
I think that's the question to be extended, and the attorney there did bring, and her advice was to kind of not count on that, because we really don't know where they would be taking the money. The fear for some districts that may rely on ECS is that if we put too much pressure, they're going to take it from another source.
Right.
We really don't.
Yeah, if you have something to lose.
We have no, right, but other districts seem to have more.
Avon is in good shape, relatively speaking.
I disagree. So here is my concern, and it's the concern that's been voiced, that if we support full funding for CREC, then we may not get full funding. We did not get full funding last year. That had impacts, and we were fortunate enough that we could carry through that, but we don't know what those future impacts are going to be. We already know that there's a decrease in the grant list. We know that there's some other concerns, and while Avon doesn't get a substantial amount of money, we get money. We threw in there the issue of the open choice funding. That's a concern for me as well. We had this discussion previously. You know, there was concern that Hartford wouldn't come through on that money, would the state come support that out? I don't want us to endorse funding for another organization if it's going to risk our funding.
Through the chair.
I think, Mr. Fleishman, that's a valid concern. We had the same conversation in the superintendent's version that Jackie attended. One of the issues to think about, however, is if they don't fully fund what really has turned into a state school district, any of our students who attend any of their schools or their programs, they will increase the tuition for it by a fairly exorbitant amount. So they are to, it is a robbing Peter and paying Paul situation. So we run a risk no matter what. If the state does not make good on its financial promises to CREC, CREC cannot continue to run in a deficit than it is. And Houston, I don't want to quote the exact number, I don't have that with me, but it's, if I remember right, it's somewhere around $27 million a year, which is, I think, how they're about to start behind, as you're saying. So the state will fund them appropriately, or they in turn will charge the districts sending the students there more money for our students to attend. Now, how that shakes out dollar-for-dollar ECS, we have to look at, but as you mentioned already, we don't get so much ECS funding that we're gambling with that much, but we do send a number of students between magnet schools and some of our special education programs and programming and so on out to CREC run schools. So it's just, it's tricky that I really don't.
I understand that, and the special.
I understand that, and the special education is a separate issue, which I understand too. But at the same time, when we look at why our students are going to magnet schools, a lot of that may be addressed by our own program by being competitive, offering the type of experiences that some of these other schools, other magnet schools are offering, that students are going in that are not getting here. That is a remedy we as a board can pursue in terms of our course offerings and our setup. We've talked extensively about offering a more rigorous program. This may be our opportunity to increase what we have here. That's all I'm saying. I just, I'm very concerned about giving our money away. We lost all the funding, most of the funding last year, and, you know, it's not looking so good at the state, we don't know what's coming with the new administration. It's all, I just, I caution, and I don't, I would prefer you did not vote on that resolution. I'm not saying vote no, but I would rather you abstain, would be my personal preference.
I have no idea what the rule is on this, if I have to be, do I, what is the rule?
I don't think there's a rule, I don't think you have to vote your conscience. I recognize, I think Bridgette, that they can't come back and say, we're short, pick a number, a million dollars, and we're going to divide that by all the students because the tuition is statutorily set. So it's a difficult position. I think that everybody has heard the issue, I think we're all set regarding that. I would just say, do your best, and, you know, that's why we appointed you as our representative to CREC, to make sure that our voices are, you know, and make sure that, you know, you understand other people have concerns, which I also care...
I share their concerns, and it came, we had a very large discussion, and I felt better because we had counsel there really to speak to the districts and about what would be best for us, and that our superintendent has been involved with this superintendent discussion, so it felt, it feels okay to me. We were really cautioned not to, probably to the benefit of them, right, not to kind of go down this road of the ECS funding. But I feel like for us, and I don't know the math on this, I guess Bridgette and I would have to get together to figure out, when we look at the students, I disagree with you, I don't think we're going to, I think our students are going to continue to go. It seems like people who want to go to certain magnet schools, you know, they feel passionately about those particular specialties, yes. So I don't know that we can fix it in time, or change it, or really create a program that would be big enough and budget-friendly enough to kind of accommodate that kind of a shift. So I guess Bridgette and I before met, we need to sit down and make sure that the numbers don't look really out of whack, you know, that it would still be a benefit to us, and maybe that makes you feel like we're doing our due diligence, to make sure that when you look at the magnet tuition and special LPs and all that, that we're coming out on the even end to support the resolution.
I think what's going to happen is that CREC will be scaled back as a political reality, whether you like it or not, but I think that's going to be a problem, because I don't think they're going to get full funding.
And they have, and they have really, really scaled that, they have cut back a lot, I mean, they've lost a lot of people.
They're probably going to end up closing schools.
That has been the competition.
Well, traditionally, if you look at what the legislature has done with colleges and the higher ed system, they've routinely cut back on what they're willing to spend on higher education, and they've told each of the boards of trustees that you control tuition, you can give yourself as much of this money back as you want, and then some if you want and if you need to. And they've always come back to raising tuition. So I'm afraid they might do the same thing here because that's what they've traditionally done in the college sector. They can just as easily say to CREC, we don't have any money to give you, but you can raise tuition all you need to on your constituent...
Well, that's exactly what we're trying to avoid next week, well, point, right.
So anything we do, hopefully, will be better than that.
Well, that's a statutory change.
Thank you, Jackie and Bridgette. Any other questions, comments? Great, thank you for bringing that to us. All right, the board chair update, I think I'd just like to take a moment to share that Mr. Roshu, who does the choral performances and teaching in the school, sent his regrets that they weren't able to bring Camerata to our meeting this evening to perform for us. They really have quite the schedule of caroling events that they're attending in the evenings as well as during the school day, and their concert is tomorrow evening at 7:00, and it's always amazing. So if you can take the time to come and experience that, I would highly recommend it. I do miss having them here, but I completely understand why they couldn't attend. So that was just my brief update. So I'll move now on to this superintendent's report.
Thank you. Brief, with this many things that we need to go through tonight, you see the hiring report, we have just a few that are replacements. It's on page 20, and a new enrichment coach, which you know we had in budget, it's a teacher on special assignment. Our enrollment, CUP 21, we are up 12 students from November to December. We're up at Pine Grove, as you already know, we've been working with them quite a bit, particularly kindergarten, we're also up at Roaring Brook by a few, the middle school, and we are steady at high school. And these don't take you too high, I don't think, a lot that we've seen this week, 12 more. So, good news is, people like to come to school, they've got, and they're moving here, so perhaps the grant list will, it's a new construction. Strategic plan update, I think we had a conversation at the board retreat two weeks ago, and we are meeting again as an administrative team this Thursday to continue our work as the entire administrative team toward looking back at our district goals, which we'll talk about again briefly tonight, and our focus areas, and what our action steps look like moving forward, and how to ensure coherence throughout the school district related to the achievement of the goals and focus areas that we have come together around, I should say, and with a lot of feedback gathered out from the schools, but I'll speak more to that later tonight, so I'll move ahead from there. And just wanted to also thank, he's not here to hear me say this, but someone will let him know. Brian is, interestingly enough, one of the first people that I met in the school district and when he came as superintendent, and he has shown exactly what I saw here that you described tonight to me, was the first thing in the district in many ways. He's been a help to me, which is not necessarily what you would expect in a custodian that shows up at 4:00 AM to, gets up at 4:00 AM to open the high school early in the morning, we can say that about, but he, he's a known leader in this building and a very helpful person that you very often have a scene with, it's happened to me, and I do recognize him also. Thank you. He's not surprised that he was recommended, I guess I was saying, I won't embarrass him by saying, well, anyways, he's been there for me the past eight months. Other thing, I'd like, wanted to touch back on the pajama day, because we did do that throughout the district. Cute, of course, the younger they are, sorry, partial to the little ones who showed up running around at Roaring Brook and Pine Grove in the pajamas, and to the faculty and staff members who joined in to help the students to raise that much money, because I know that we raised quite a bit in every building. You know, at Roaring Brook, it was around $900.
Just over $1,000.
And at Pine Grove, she had $1,001.
But there was $80.
Thompson Brook in the middle of school, we're vying for third, but there's only two grade levels there, so I think...
About 600.
Same.
Yeah, same, so, I'm correct. So thank you again, because that was really for good cause, and I think the best part of it, in my opinion, was how student-driven and light it was here in high school, and I appreciate the student effort that went into that, and the administration supporting them to be able to raise that kind of money for students in need, children in need. That said, we left this up so that we did not lose the projections tonight. So I need to get out and go back over to the computer to pull up the proposed budget. I have it show on your board. And the binder should have that. Heather, are you going to put two more? If you can't hear me well enough, let me know, but I'd rather do it from here so I can see all of it, thank you. So I first have to say that, as you know, this is the first time that I am doing this in district, and what I recall my mental model of doing a district budget, we are ahead of schedule for me recommending a budget because we still have two more workshops to have in Florida education. So just to put, I respect this for you, in my mind, the way that it normally works is we would, not right along, but I'd have to adjust how I think about it, that we would do all of our workshops together before I recommended my budget final to you. So I want to put that here in public, so that I start by saying that at this juncture, on December 18th, this is where we are starting with our recommendation to the board. As you know, we had one workshop together already, so we have had discussions about where we are headed, but we still don't even have solid numbers in some areas programmatically and so on. So this led to be a brief overview of where we are as of today. Your budget binders that have the line-by-lines to be transmitted to you to be able to go through, and then we'll have two more workshops that are already on the calendar in January to dig through some more of this, and for you to finally make a final recommendation after gathering more feedback. So that's how we envision the process happening. And that said, I expected to keep this brief for you tonight and to hit the highlights, and I need to see that. So it started with the mission statement, I'd like to start with the meeting's permission statement, because obviously, I think this starts to round our work between our mission statement and our goals, which you'll see we align everything budgeted that is really the primary driver. Just a few highlights from last year. What I'd like to say, that, you know, the good pieces we've been able to benefit from as a school district this year, of course, as you know, we've been able to increase some of our staffing throughout the schools to implement the maker spaces, we've got textbooks, chrome books, including one-to-one at the elementary school, and we've been working toward enrichment for all students throughout the district, but particularly grades K-6, which is also why we've now hired the enrichment coach. Could you go back one second, I just want to point out, and again, you remember our gross increase last fiscal year was 2.08% at $57.4 million. So this is, I know this is a lot on one slide, but I also know that everyone here knows what the budget process was, and just been doing it. Our administrators, our faculty, our staff, were very involved in the budget process over the course of the past at least three to four months, and really did a great job. I'd like to thank all of you, and I know that's one of the reasons that you're all here tonight, to be able to see how the culmination of our efforts together, because they were all part of what I'm presenting to you here tonight, including doing things a little bit differently. And out of the box for me, kind of at the last minute, I recognized that when we're in this very short budget window, doing our own presentations for the entire administrative group, which I think went really well, and I'm appreciative for it because it helped us to focus. And as you know, we went through all of that, we made many iterations, we had a preliminary budget, we have a working budget, and we had our preliminary workshop together on the 20th. So our budget development goals, they're the same as our district goals. These are the main picture areas that we are looking to focus on, culture, achievement, systems, and communication. We've been talking about that as the four main areas that we need to focus on as a district. And so our primary driving question for us as an administrative team and as faculty and staff was, how do we directly align resources to meet these goals in this year? That said, when we went through our current needs, these are what I would call the enhancements to the budget that we're going to talk about tonight, because, at least again, as we are here tonight, these were our, I call them non-negotiables, that we decided as a team needed to be a part of this budget as we moved forward. The increase of a wellness teacher at high school, which is a point two, to someone who's already a point eight. Additional assistant cross-country coach, due to the number of students that have been joining cross-country, and safety and supervision needs, some athletic equipment that's necessary at the high school, some of which, thankfully, I forgot this to my superintendent, it's for about a day now, we were able to remove because of the referendum for the church project passed, and we were able to pull some of the equipment that we did have in this budget out, that's part of the referendum. Safety and security specialists that we needed as an increase at Thompson Brook, a community advisor stipend at Pine Grove to manage many of the programs that go on there that we already have in other places to even out what we are doing. Safety and security specialists at Roaring Brook School, a preschool coordinating teaching stipend, you see how we're changing our preschool program, number one, but number two, when we put folks together at the table that are team leaders, for example, and coordinators, there's been no one to represent pre-K in that mix. And pre-K, as you know, is a very specific program with different needs, and they're in other places in the district, and so we were asked by Gnome and Tiffany to add that in as a small stipend so that we could have a teacher managing some pieces of preschool. District-wide, again, you see our numbers, we are looking at an increase of a kindergarten teacher to be able to maintain class sizes, additional seasonal maintenance help, this is both in the summer, like we did in this past year, and I think as you saw, we were able to get a lot more done in the summer by having some seasonal help at lower rates to help our normal custodians and maintainers who are really barely even able to take the time off in the summer to get the buildings back ready to open, but also, we're looking at it in the winter too, to help with some of our snow removal needs. And a certified OT assistant, that's an increase that we already, you know, we look at this CODA position, hate the acronyms, but it can, can you, so I don't misspeak.
Certified occupational therapist assistant.
Yep. So that we actually save money on, by hiring our own instead of contracting those kinds of services. So an increase in this way is beneficial to the district, saves us money on the backend if we had to contract an occupational therapist. So, here's the unfortunate reality of where we started. This number 60,134,820 is what I would call the preliminary budget number that I would be getting, so to speak, we started with this year. If we were going to include those enhancements I just talked about that are non-negotiables, our salary-related contractual increases, the initial rollover of expenditures from one year to the next, and the initial request from all the district departments, this was the number that we started at as of about October 30th. So, that's a 4.62% increase over last year, and any given budget year, we knew that was not a feasible increase, but particularly in this season, when we know we have a lot of concern about the grant list being reduced in town, and so the revenue on the town side going down, we knew we were going to have to do a lot of work to come in at a number that we might be able to fully support as a board and a town. So that's when the councils came out, I guess we would say, and we started looking at where we could make reductions. So, again, this is why I said this is overview, our initial reductions, by November, we were at $1.1 million, so reductions, so that's $60 million number. For example, these are just a couple of examples to get us those reductions. We made the change in the proposed pre-K rollout, as you heard, we came up with a budget mutual way to roll out pre-K in this year at least, and to pilot it without adding in any additional staff and whole additional classroom, so that we could see how that works in the 1920 year, and then we can go from there. So the initial request to what we were going to do with pre-K was going to cost us quite a bit additional staff, and we took that out of requests. Another example, you know, we're looking at scheduling changes... Another example, you know, we're looking at scheduling changes at the middle school, but they are still working on this. And there are several iterations deep in what a possible schedule may look like in the middle school. But initially, the staff request, and we can afford this in the budget workshop, or around quarter of a million dollars, failed to make some of the scheduling work that they were looking at as a team, and so we reduced that. And thankfully, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Papa, and the whole leadership of the scheduling committee there have done a ton of work going back to it. And it's still time to make it work again in its budget neutral ways we can. So, those are two examples taking it down 1.1 million dollars. We also just frankly went line by line in the buildings, and I have to again thank the administrators who picked this up and ran with it. We asked a lot of questions because sometimes little expenses add up to big expenses, right? So, if we've ordered, just throwing an example out there, if we've ordered X amount of colored pencils for how many years, do we still need to order X amount of colored pencils? Is that still the amount that they're using? Do you use one different kind of colored pencil though, sitting in the closet somewhere? Our administrators went back and had these conversations with their department coordinators, with the team leaders, the faculty and staff, and asked them to take their individual pieces of the budget, so say the first grade budget, as a team in first grade, and say, okay, what do we use here? And what do we need? Maybe there are things we need that aren't here, or maybe there are some things we need that aren't here, that aren't here that we actually need to add in or reallocate funds. And they did a great job of doing that, and we did it at our level also. So, now, we got it down to what I'd call the working preliminary budget. By about November 20th, we're at $58 million. $58,784,000. If I just something along the lines, you go. So, now we're down, as you can see, at 2.27% increase. So, we came out of gate at 4.62. By around November 20th, making these reductions, going back, sitting with principals and department chairs and moving things around and deciding what we've had to have this year and what we could put aside for another year because maybe it didn't work out with our goals right away to the dollar amount attached to it, we're at 2.27. Frankly, we thought we could possibly have stopped there and still had a salvageable budget. Because keep in mind, as I already mentioned, this includes all of our contractual allowances. These are all of our projected salary increases also. So, I know there's been a lot of talk from town, you know, that it's a meeting salon. There's a teacher contract for one, and I can bring that up now so that I speak specifically about teachers. But on the other hand, this was a year we had to negotiate a contract, and so there were increases to the salaries as a result of collective bargaining, and there has been the challenge of trying to determine how we might mitigate some of those costs back there so that it didn't drive the budget completely. And that's really, in part, why we worked this hard at it because I was at all meetings that many of you were at and knew that the town council, board of finance, and the town as a whole could not support at 4% or at one point it was a little worse than that, what it may have looked like, near a 5% budgetary increase. So, we worked hard to keep what we had in place, but reallocate and make some reductions to come to 2.27. But we went back to it one more time. In part because, one, we were waiting for the health insurance. At the time, it was still a projection. And Heather, being conservative, as I appreciate, when we're talking about budget, had a 5.9 health insurance projection. As it turned out, the health insurance increased not that much, it's pretty steady. We're pretty much at zero, except for the trade fees of health insurance, which is great. But the flip side of that is some of our other numbers that we don't have control over, like health insurance, went up. So, for example, pension contributions, as dictated by actuarial numbers, went up. So, they, we don't, as you know, overall, any new employees pay pensions, but we still have existing employees that are part of the pension plan, and so our contributions there went up. So, long story short, those nearly wiped out the projection for the insurance. We have some other, to see where the increases are, big picture. $640,000, this is after we made the reductions, mind you. $640,000 increase in salaries, which is much less than people expected it to be even just looking at teacher salaries. We have an increase of $479,000 benefits, and let's see where I'm getting at. That's not necessarily health insurance, that's other benefits associated with pension. There's a little bit of OPED, the acronym stands for. Yes, and give other post-employment benefits, is what we pay off the insurance companies. Our transportation went off, as we always expect. But on the flip side, we were able to reduce, as you see in the red, some of our other lines, contracted services being one, and utilities as a result of what we've been doing to conserve energy in the district. And there we are, 2.27. That's how that shook down. So, we look to where can we reallocate? And we already put one of these into a stack, did you know? We took a safety and security specialist from here, moved that person down to Pine Grove. We will make another move to put someone at the middle school. Who's coming here? Not yet. And we are, I don't want anyone to get nervous. This is a reallocation for special education teacher, but we had an open position right now. So, I can't say where the allocation is going to come from right this moment, or who does it need, load size and so on. But Roaring Brook is in need of another special education teacher that we determined to be one of the non-negotiables. And so, we are going to, instead of adding in that extra position, we are going to utilize what we already have and do some realignment. Because we have an open position right now, and you know, you see retirements under and so on. So, I want to leave it there because I don't want any of our faculty to get nervous that we're looking to move someone that doesn't know that yet. We really are not certain exactly the other idea based on case loads. Additional reductions, as you know, we now reduce the clerk typist central office. We're able to move that person into a fold, but it was an open position. We are reallocating what that fold looks like, we've got the process of that. Again, try to look for reductions without impacting our programs or what we are able to do efficiently for individuals who've been able to do that without any individuals actually losing their job, scheduling some folks around. Where we saw that number that we cut from the initial additions, and there's some other reductions. Another nearly half million dollars that we pulled out after that 2.27. This is really where we shaved it. So, the competent classroom, we reduced that line. That was, okay, $30,000. That is the curriculum work that we have done over the years with Allison and Maida. We have taken that line out of the budget. Thankfully, Donna has worked and only the teachers who have worked on this committee have worked very hard to get all of that curriculum revised over the years. As you know, we're doing some of the last of it right now. That is not to say that nothing will ever need to be revised again, certainly, as you know, that's an ongoing process. And it's not to say we may never utilize the services of the competent classroom again. But what we will do, if we do need any additional assistance, is utilize our Title II grant bucks, which this is a perfect use of that money because that money is very limited in the ways that it can be used. It has to be for adult kind of professional development, not for, that's something you'll regret later, for students. Capturing kids' hearts, as you know, we had this conversation already. We reduced that line item, what we had there for the training, for more than $35,000, nearly $36,000. Because we are looking for ways to continue on with our programming without paying for the outside trainers kind of doing it. Moving toward a train-the-trainer model and capitalizing on, we already have a place in the district after many years of funding that professional development from the outside. Our substitute coverage, I have to thank our faculty and staff who, the attendance rates continue to improve for. And we're looking at five-year projections here, because this is not, as you know, done lightly yet. Whether it's more conservative than not, probably could have used this a little bit even more, but we want to be conservative. You never know what next year brings. And we took, you know, the $100,000 out of the substitute coverage line based on what our pensions have been improvement in attendance. We've had this conversation also. We don't have a finalized version right now of what we're offering the Chinese will look like in the district because we've been contracting those services through the Confucius Institute through agreement. You know, there's conversation going on there about what that may or may not look like with both the institute and our teachers union. So, at present, this is exactly what we talked about in the last budget workshop. That's leaving the current money that we have to maintain the two teachers that we have in Millan High School. That's what's left here right now in hopes that we are able to continue the agreement doing at the state. This is an area where between now and our budget workshop in January, we'll have a better answer about what that looks like during the forward, and we will have to make a decision. As we talked about, we'll reduce three. We take all of the money out, and there is no tiny point of destruction as the difficulty of hiring a teacher in the union and the dollar amount that might cost. There is the possibility that we do one without bringing the teachers union and maintaining these two teachers, the Confucius Institute, and just maybe collect a lot of money, have them pulled out. The $100,000. Or we attempt to hire perhaps one teacher just for the high school, or two, somehow split, and we probably look about a $100,000 salary added into the budget. So, right now, though, what we have is to continue the way it is. So, that brings the total reductions to just over $1.6 million.
Can I just clarify a question?
Yeah.
So, the $100,000 is what the plan would have been hypothetically status quo. Would we continue with Confucius? No?
No. Remember, the year that we are living in,
Yep.
they weren't even able to send us the number of teachers. So, we were supposed to have four.
Okay.
So, removing that $100,000 is accounting for, sorry, five, excuse me. So, removing that $100,000 is really keeping the status quo that we have right now because we already have that money in the budget.
If they gave us the five, what would have been the cost of the Confucius Institute?
$155,000 or so.
$155,000?
Right.
Okay.
So, we have 50, 55.
So, there's still money at the moment in the budget?
To maintain the two.
Okay.
Correct.
And then we'll have to figure out what that two looks like still?
More than likely. I think we keep it the way we are writing it in the year we are living in right now.
Okay.
And the money isn't in the budget right now to do that, even with that little $1,000.
That was right.
That requires the agreement between the union, us, and the Confucius Institute.
So, there is a line for Chinese education?
There is. In this current budget, we have left it, because that's what we discussed in the last budget workshop. We left it as is, status quo until we figured out what it had to be in the future.
Ending resolution.
Yep.
And it will be resolved before we finalize the budget?
Yes. Again, it's early and there's been a lot of talks around us, so we thought of saying something the way it was for now. So, we, $1.6 million in reductions, some reallocations, and there's where we land. A 1.98% increase over last year. That's with the non-negotiable enhancements I mentioned. That's with maintaining the program that we have. Honestly, the majority of what the departments and the buildings asked for. See, they're nodding their heads. Thank you. Appreciate that. You yell when you're ready. It was just in the way we looked at how to spend the money and in what years we did work. So, I'll give you another example, something that was a request, but was cut. Our kids for pottery needed a significant amount of work when they were in their budget requests for coming here. When we found out what they looked like, we said, yeah, we should probably replace those right now and not have kids utilizing any of the way that they look. So, we took money from a maintenance line and an art supply line and fixed them this year, so we're able to reduce that next year. Another example, we needed coral risers at the middle school?
High Grove.
High Grove. We needed coral risers that the students stand on, say, they're missing some of the backs, well, that's not safe. So, we're going to replace them right now. We stopped spending the line currently and replaced them now, took them out of the request. So, those are some of the other examples of how we were able to make some of the reductions. Gave them some of what they needed right now. And should get out next year.
Here, one more question.
Yes.
I know there's been discussion at some point between you and the town regarding salaries of the SROs that have been resolved.
Right, one sec. We don't have officially writing. I, what I expect though, and I'm grateful to Mr. Robinson and the police chief because it looks like they are going to not charge us any salary amount, the SROs remain to us. Mr. Robinson and I just have that conversation, I believe, so. That's going to be either this year or moving forward. That's next year. As, as Mr. Robinson said to me, the town feels that that is something that they ought to provide to schools. And so, they are willing to do as long as they can. So, we're appreciative of that. Because that is a huge savings that, um, salary by $120,000 in salary, so that would add a quarter of a percent onto this budget. Mr. Robinson?
The reserves for the health insurance, are we running it what the actuaries have suggested?
Yes. I was at that meeting, correct me if I'm wrong. Not only are we running it what the actuaries suggest, we are very well-funded. And that's part of the reason that we left, we actually made a decision that insurance could have been just a smidge reduced by actuarial standards. And the town, between the town and board, we're acting as, on behalf of the board, obviously, we made a decision to leave the funding as is so that if we did have a catchback every year, it's still in good shape.
Is the funding the same between the town and the board?
We pay more than the town does.
Percent of cost?
Exactly the same. Yes.
Exactly the same? All right. For a while, they
Not, not, no.
They crossed there.
Pardon me, I thought you meant the whole, obviously.
No, that one.
Exactly. I understand what you're saying. Yes, it's the same. We did have that conversation also. Any other questions?
I'm incredibly impressed with this number. I can tell you've done a lot of work, and I'm happy to see nodding, smiling heads on the side of the room. That gives me peace as we continue moving and talking about this budget, but this is a great place to start from, so thank you very much. I don't know if other board members have any other questions at this time.
Are there any other outstanding big-ticket items that need to be resolved for the final budget? Or should we anticipate being relatively close to this number when we get to the final point?
Not that I'm aware of. So, I would say we could expect to be relatively close to this unless we make a decision together to make changes that take that further down. We come down, it's gonna be real hard. We already did give it all done already, unfortunately, so. And, you know, like we always said, we aim for zero, right? But you can see that that would pretty much decimate, decimate the district because we've already looked at everything, around teachers, class sizes, services, and luckily, to the church project pass because we had quite a bit that we saved up.
I would just hope you thank you. I think it's a really responsive and responsible number. I think you, I really appreciate knowing that you took it into account, so many different parts of the district and so many different viewpoints about what our values are. I really believe that a budget is, really reflects our values, and I think we did that in a really responsible way, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or concerns, or I know we need time to go through the big binders, but again, I think we, I think we're starting from a place that is very physically responsible to be able to burn to the town. I would think that, given, if you are to get in that, we were projected, be happy to see, we're starting from this place. Couple more, if you have, these are just some Couple more, this is just so you can see how it shakes out, different categories and percentage of the budget. They are, salaries and benefits being just below 80%. As you all know by this point, that's very common in the, um, board of education budget. And this whole budget's a hole many times. Naturally, it's pretty good to think that we thought it was below the, it's barely. But being below 80 is actually, uh, from a budgetary standpoint, the organization was tied to the current budget. Not even feasible. And we'll get more into these, you know, as the process goes on. But we can see what the general fund project is. Again, that's using numbers that we know, you can see if you find a problem for. Less of our general fund revenues because we, again, we knew that was coming. We've got a part of all those conversations with the town. Uh, projected grant revenues, this is what it is, right? We, we get some, we don't get a lot and we don't expect it to change very much from last year. Which is definitely to be status quo. Given the information we have right now. Yep.
So is there some reason we've not gotten a client to the immigration bank? Or have they changed to have some, sure, make sure. We didn't.
We don't follow.
Well. This doesn't, and of course, that doesn't mean without other grants for Pine Grove. We talked earlier tonight, for example, about some climate work that we're doing. But that's not incorporated here, consulting not incorporated, but the grant money will be pulled from the base of it. So again, thank you. You know that this is our goal too, as you already mentioned, that what we do in this budget is reflective of our values and our feeling that this is what we're here to do. We educate the next generation and we do the best we can to be fiscally responsible at the same time that we're responsive to many of the changing needs of those students that suffered results in 2019, 20. This would be the class of, wait, no, yeah, let's see. Current kindergarten class is what, 2035 or something? 2031? Imagine that? We might be, we might be, hold on. Any, any last questions? Again, thank you. Thank you to all of the faculty and staff and the central office administrative team who will work right until the 11th hour, right before we move over here, as usual. Much appreciated. As you showed, a lot of specialists who have learned to process. What can someone do my crazy way of thinking, I think? It's not like outside of a box, sometimes it's outside of the. Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I don't describe this so, thank you very much. So I, I don't know if I should sit down or not because I, is the, are the goals next on the agenda?
You have to set a calendar.
Okay, so I'll sit down for a minute for that for that. Oh, oh, thank you for reminding me. I get to one sentence brag. Congratulations to the high school and really the school district as a whole. You see, we sent out a press release and an overview. All the parents tomorrow, we've been named to the AP honor role to be acknowledged as a school district, one of only 15 in Connecticut that are being acknowledged for our participation rates in advanced placement courses at the high school. And that's, that's over years, that is years worth of work moving forward. But we are looking to continue that, that work and to continue to offer college-level courses to our students. And also very grateful that our students are availing themselves to those classes and doing the work that it puts in, that they need to put in to do this well. So we're excited about that.
Okay, so next we'll move to the consent calendar. I have a motion to approve.
Would you pull 5141? I'll move to approve all other items.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
David seconds, all in favor of pulling 5141 but approving the rest?
Actually, don't vote on that.
I said, don't vote on removing it?
Yeah, don't vote on removing it. It's a matter of right by any member to remove it.
Okay, so then approval of the remaining three items.
I.
All in favor, I. Any opposed? Abstentions passes unanimously. Houston should have a speak.
If I might address 5141, I would move to approve it with the following modifications. Page 23, I thought about Laura Young's comment and I think she's right. So that I would delete on page 23, section three, all the lettered items and just say oath, semicolon, or. And then on page 29, we were supposed to change that to an oath from an acknowledgement. And then it didn't seem to happen in the materials that we have. So therefore I wanted to spread those items on the minutes and to move that it be approved with those two modifications.
May I to the policy chair, board chair? Thank you, Houston. The acknowledgement was changed in the actual policy but not on the form from oaths to acknowledgements, so we'll make that, we'll make that change. Thank you for pointing that out. And we don't have any issue with removing the lettering either.
Right, because I don't think school nurses can actually administer oaths and there are other people who can administer oaths. So Laura said, do we really want to have that list? And I thought about it and I apologize for being slow on the uptake. I think she was right.
Wow.
Make sure that's in the minutes. Right there. She's gonna be bold faced.
So now, any other discussion?
Oh, the nature of the form is modified to equal people on the six.
Yes. You know. Shirley, are you giving that to the second?
So now.
Could you be a second?
Second, okay. Do I have a second please?
I'll second.
David seconds. All in favor? I.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions passes unanimously. Yes. Okay, thank you. Now on to new business, mission statement and district goals.
So I just want to put them up because even though I really don't know what they are for the public consumption. Quick recap. It's on computer screen but not on the real screen. Someone help. This room is like technologically cursed today as the principals very well know. We've tried to do quite a bit of work in there today. Just doesn't want to buy. So well, we figured out how to get that up there. All I'm putting up right now is what is the mission statement that we had adopted as a board in 2012 that we worked on again as a result of, one, starting with the board planning for strategic goals. Two, going back to the school district and talking about the mission statement. There we are, just the wrong documents. I'll get it. Yep, thank you. Thank you for letting, I saved it so it'll go up there easily. There we go. I know that's a lot on the screen, but I know all the board members have this. I know all of the administrators.
I'm sure you don't think we have enough.
I said, I, I said, um. So this is, it is revised from the original adoption in 2012 as a result of our conversations both in district and then at our last board retreat. I did send all that out to all of you. Small adjustments that were made because generally speaking, we as a school district out of board of education felt that what's in this mission and statement of belief still speaks to the work that we are doing in 2019, which it did in 2012. But perhaps needs to be reinvigorated a little bit or brought back to life. We committed to use a number of different sayings for it. So as you know, I have asked that the board consider re-adopting the mission statement tonight to reemphasize our focus on what drives our work. And also that the board approved, approved the district, the four focus areas that we have, thank you, that we have determined are what we call the big picture or the buckets for our work. Culture, achievement, communication, and systems with the related district-wide goals that you see here. These are a result of months and months of work with the board head, with faculty staff, administrators, with parents, with town officials, community members. A lot of feedback that has, as I call it, come from the bottom to the top and then top back down. Our administrators have done an excellent job facilitating these conversations out in the buildings on professional development days at the beginning of the school year. And likewise, our department heads and folks like Kim Merriman and Tiffany Fox working with people in the special education department who really serve as professionals because we really believe that to move the district forward to keep us, to follow through with special students, we all know and understand the big picture of what we are working for. And this is what I call the elevator version. Because as you know, we have long involved plans with action steps as a district's leadership team but also as school leadership teams. And they have, as building administrators and department heads, done a tremendous amount of work in a very short amount of time. So we have wrapped these to make school plans that are directly connected to them. I have now sat with every principal, Dr. Rusak and I have, and most department chairs over the past two weeks, just as we last met. And they have put together with their teachers and staff full plans with action steps that are all related to these goals. And again, I'm incredibly thankful that the work has been done there because that's where it's going to happen more than any closeouts. On the ground, in classrooms, in buildings, in partnership between us at central office, us as a board, and as well as you guys as a whole. So, and we talk at length about these goals. We made a few adjustments of your recommendations in the last retreat. The administration has seemed to have a chance to give any feedback today out of it. And they pretty much said, that's what we expected too. It's a word smithing, but we're ready to go.
Alright, motion to approve the mission, the statement of beliefs, and the focus areas.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Four seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you and thank you to the board members for the tremendous amount of work that you have done alongside me and the countless hours I know you'll never get back tonight, having these discussions. Like it's really important to us as the district to have your support as a board. And I know that I speak for all of us when I say that that's how we feel about the work that we've been doing with this board. And I, and we are very appreciative.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next item is approval of grades five, nine, 10, 11, and 12 English language arts primary instructional materials. Uh, Dr. Essler, is that who wants to speak today?
Thank, thank goodness.
So this evening we have seven primary instructional materials that have been reviewed and recommended by the Critical Professional Development Council. They've also gone through the 30-plus day review period. For grades five, nine, 11, and 12, it's one text and three texts for grade 10. Each of these texts are really to supplement already existing texts that we have assigned to our units to give more choice for students. And one of the voices that we don't feel have been very well through our choice of texts, so to speak, as we share at CTC, is the voice of women writers. And tonight you'll notice that all of these texts are actually women authors, so. We will come forward for your.
So we are at the plate of approval this year. Alright, does anybody have any questions for Donna?
Motion to approve.
And Houston moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, hail, passes unanimously. Thank you.
One, in January, current course.
Excellent.
That's she.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ash, for coming.
Have a good holiday, I'll see you soon. On here tomorrow. Make sure you come to school here tomorrow.
I'll be there.
Alright, communication from board members, anyone? Alright, communication from the public. Anybody who decided to stay and would like to say anything? Alright, thank you. Um, so now I will actually move that we move into an executive session with a brief recess. If I can have a motion?
To move.
Alright, Houston moves, do I have a second?
Point of inquiry is being invited into the session.
Thank you. So at 8:31, we would like to invite Mr. Roberto Medick, Mrs. Mashad, and Donna and Dr. Rusak along with the superintendent to executive session.
See you tomorrow, two of us.
Thank you.
All of, we all have to vote, right?
Yes.
Yes.